Good evening, everyone. I'll knock the gavel and call the meeting to order. It's our June meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. And we'll start out with a roll call.
Mr. Ayers is absent. Mr. Diker?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And just as an aside, we have lost one of our members, not permanently, but he is moving out. So Alex Height will thank him for his service here on Planning Commission. And we will also welcome Neil Duker.
Diker.
Diker, I'm sorry. People misspell self, so welcome. And we'll try not to be too hard on you all, too. Don't be too hard on him. It's his first night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will also vote to excuse...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to excuse Drew Ayers.
Thank you. And I have a second. And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. We have the reading of the minutes, rather. Any additions?
Agenda.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Agenda. Any additions, corrections, changes, drops? We good for that?
Good.
You'd think after all these years I'd remember how to do this, but now we'll do last month's...
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the June agenda for the Planning Commission.
We'll do the June agenda, okay. And second, and we'll do that by general consensus, okay? The last month's minutes, any changes, additions, corrections? We all good for that?
It's abstaining.
I'm sorry?
It's going to abstain.
Right. Okay. Since you weren't here, you might as well abstain for that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the May 5, 2021 meeting.
Okay, I've got a motion.
I'll second.
I've got a second, and the three of us will agree on that. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to our... We have three public hearings this evening and a subdivision. So without further ado, let's read the first public hearing case.
This is case number PUD 13-5, specific site plan number one, on an application filed by Synergy Building Systems, John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of an 85,000-square-foot office building on approximately five acres. The property is located at 3875 Germany Lane, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcels 83, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, and 91 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Just so you will know, the way we run our public hearings is first we'll ask for the applicant to give us a presentation about what he has in mind, he or she has in mind. Then we'll have a report from staff. Once that is done, we will open the floor for input from the public. If you wish to speak against, in favor of, or simply have questions, I will ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. Once everyone has had a chance to speak, we'll see if there's any written input. And if not, or once that's done, we'll close the public hearing. We will discuss it and hopefully vote on it. So without further ado, I presume we have someone here representing the applicant.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Koppelcheck with Synergy, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard. Not much in addition to what Melissa presented, but this is a parcel that we acquired in August of last year. Some of you might have remembered, we brought it through for a rezoning at the time. We do have it proposed to be roughly 85,000-square-foot building. It is a three-story building. Our intent right now is to commence once we have gone through Beaver Creek process and the Green County process with the building permit. So open, obviously, for any comments or questions that we have after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's staff's turn.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 13-5. It's the first specific site plan for this PUD. Again, the applicant's requesting approval of an 85,000-square-foot, three-story office building on just under five acres. Project's located in northwestern Beaver Creek, actually just on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway, about 300 feet east of where Colonel Glenn and Germany Lane meet. So you can see on this kind of zoomed-in aerial, the Futures, Inc. Road extension is just to the north, and just to the north of that is Colonel Glenn. So we're only talking 100, 150 feet south of Colonel Glenn, where Germany Lane parallels Colonel Glenn. This aerial photo was taken in March of 2020. Since then, these houses, one was former submarine house and restaurant, they've all been demolished. There's an existing, I guess, block building. It's auto repair tool storage and associated equipment, which is also part of this application. And it's the intent of the applicant to demolish this building as well. Wine Coop Court is a former right-of-way that the city vacated in the last month, which will also be incorporated within this development. This is just a picture from it from last week, and you can see where the old houses were. And it's now vacant field. The PUD, a majority of the projects located within PUD 13-5, which I've outlined in the blue hash line, but a portion of the proposed parking lot and stormwater detention pond is within the B3 zoning district. The uses that they're proposing are allowed within the zoning of this PUD and also within the B3 zoning district. To the north is some B2. Again, this is where Zink Road is going to be punched through later this year. And then to the west is B3, and it's a professional office building. There's also a extended stay hotel just to the east of the proposed development. Seen here is the site plan. The building is on the south end of the site. They're going to have a direct access off of Germany Lane. And then, again, they're converting the former Wine Coop Court into a portion of their access point. They will maintain an access for the hotel down on the southeast corner. And the hotel also has an access point directly off of Germany Lane. So there will be access through the site. It's a little easier to see on this colorized aerial where you can see the access to the office building here, access to the hotel here, and then an access point here. With this application, they'll be extending the sidewalk along Germany Lane to help with the pedestrian, non-motorized transportation aspect of the site. There is Meyer and Wright State University and a lot of university housing in the area. And the pedestrian bridge that crosses 675 is also within a mile, so it's important to have this pedestrian access features to the site. In terms of parking, based on the square footage of the building, they're required to have 240 parking spaces, and they show above that at 270. So we're not concerned with the parking on site. They show overhead doors located along the front of the building, and that's why, because of the drop-off and the, just the flow of the site, there's not an extra landscape line out front here, because they will be doing drop-off into the overhead doors that are on the north elevation. Seen here is the artist rendition of the building. It'll be mostly constructed of beige and brown brick. And then you can see red brick columns, and those are carried on all four sides of the building. And then some multicolored ephes that also accent stripes around all four sides of the building. So architecturally, it's a good-looking building, and I think it'll add to the overall aesthetics of the site. There are some older buildings in the area, and I think that this is a good first step towards rejuvenating this area of the city. They're proposing a good landscape plan on site. They have a good mixture of shade trees and decorative shrubs and grasses and trees throughout the site. So staff doesn't have any concerns how they're proposing a landscape to site. They're proposing, right now they don't have a specific tenant called out, so they're proposing a generic signage on both the south and north elevations, and they've got that at about 125 square feet. So we did add a condition that 125 square feet of signage is allowed on both the north and south side. Just a few conditions in the resolution for your consideration. One is that all building equipment needs to be screened, so if they do have some HVAC units on the ground, right now it's a flat roof. I mean, they're proposing a flat roof, so it's anticipated that all the HVAC will be on the roof. But if they do need to have some ground units, those will need to be screened by landscaping, and anything on the roof will also need to be screened by roof forms, parapet walls, or the like. Also, there are, will be impact fees with this development, so those need to be paid before we release a zoning permit. And they didn't show a ground sign with their package, and so we added a condition that it be comparable to what you'd find in a B2, B3 zoning district, which is 32 square feet per sign face and five feet as a maximum height. We also stated it needs to be on a brick or masonry base that matches the brick on the building. There are 18 conditions in your resolution for your consideration. Staff has reviewed this, sent this out for comments to other agencies, and we do recommend approval subject to the 18 conditions in your resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Your usual, very comprehensive report. Since this is a public hearing, we will now open this to any input from the public. Don't be shy. Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, but I'll ask Melissa if we had any written input.
No, we didn't.
No written input. Okay. So it's our turn, and I'll start with Jonathan, since I promised Neil I wouldn't start with him.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I just have one question, just real quick for staff. So are those going to be both outbound left lanes, turn out, you're going to be able to turn left?
Are we talking here?
Yeah, there, and then...
They'll be full access points, so you'll be able to go in and out on both.
There's enough distance, I think, that you're not going to have a lot of competing, racing out of the parking lot kind of deal.
No. I mean, with the extended stay hotel, they generally, they wouldn't have the same hours as the professional office building, and I'm not, we're not worried about...
As long as you guys aren't worried about it, then...
Yeah. And in the future, there'll be an extension to Zink Road, so that'll be another access point.
Okay, so there could be potentially another turn coming into that. All right. Well, no, that's fine. If you guys are good with it, I'm good with it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Seems pretty easy to me.
Neil, no questions.
Okay. I've got a quick one, one for you and one for our applicant. I'm not quite sure from looking at that, is the driveway access off of Germany, does that align with the Zink Road?
No, we discussed that originally.
Okay.
And if this were a retail center, you know, that would be much more important with the constant traffic in and out. But because of the way the bay doors align up, they wanted to make sure the trucks have a good way to come in and line up and not be in the main drive aisle. And just the grading on the site, there's no way to move the building either way, so...
Okay.
It's not to where the traffic is going to be so heavy that, you know, it's a constant flow of traffic in and out at all times. You know, there'll be shift ends and stuff like that, but not on a retail center would be a constant stream of traffic.
Okay. I know we usually try to align those, and I'm just curious, is why...
We do.
Can you show on there with your laser where Zink Road comes through?
Might be.
I can't quite...
It will, right here.
Okay. So, but there's enough offset between the old street, Wine Coop Street, and the new entrance to the west. There's enough offset there, so you're not going to have a problem with cars digging inside.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking 100, 150 feet or so from that intersection.
Okay. And of course, it is a four-sided building.
It is.
Okay. And the corner of that building looks perilously close to the edge of the property.
Are we talking here?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and generally, that would be disconcerting if this wasn't ODOT right-of-way with, you know, you've got 80 feet to the edge of the road, so...
Sure.
I mean, it's a technical property line, but being a PUD, we have some flexibility, and that's, nothing's going to be built on that ODOT right-of-way.
And this is way above the level of the street anyway.
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's a pretty steep hill.
It's got to be 30 feet.
It's a pretty steep hill from here to here, down.
Okay.
You're good 20, 30 feet below the, above the roadway on the entrance ramp.
Great, thank you. I have one for the applicant. And it may be an easy one. The garage doors on the front, can you elucidate what they're for?
So there are three of them. They are intended for, obviously, vehicular access. There's a combination of lab and secure use happening in that space. I probably can't elaborate more than that, but it is being used as a lab and secure space on that side of the building.
Okay. And there's no way you could put those on the side rather than on the front?
Due to, so we are trying to, you know, one of the reasons that we offset the access to the site is to maintain vehicular circulation with semi-trucks.
Okay.
So the site is not real conducive to getting those on the side.
Okay, understood. If you're expecting visits from semis, I can see why. Okay, great. Gentlemen, second helpings? Okay? Then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 13-5, SSP number one, project promotum with the attached 18 conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second.
Have a second. Why don't we read the roll on this?
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for zero, and we're looking forward to seeing ground broken.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along, we have our second public hearing. And Melissa, if you will be so good as to read that.
This is case number PUD 97-1, mod 421, on an application filed by the Kleinger Group, 6219 Center Park Drive, Westchester, Ohio 45069. The application requests a major modification to the specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 14,650-square-foot freestanding emergency department building located directly to the south of 2440 Lakeview Drive. The properties are further described as Book Four, Page Six, Parcel 122, and part of Parcel 116 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And I see we have our applicant all primed and ready to go.
Yes, thank you very much.
Far away.
My name is Lyle Stiles. I'm a senior construction project manager with Cushman &amp; Wakefield, and I'm representing Hartman One LLC. That's a single-purpose entity, limited liability company, that is purchasing this land for our healthcare provider client. And I'm overseeing this property acquisition in order to develop a new freestanding emergency department that will better serve the 24/7 healthcare needs of the community. I've been working with our development partner, Remedy Medical Properties. They have an agent here, Mr. Scott Lieberman, who is the agent for Remedy, as well as Beaver Creek APL MP LLC. That is the single-purpose entity that owns the adjacent medical office building that we are connecting to. I also have with us Doug Rusty from Kleinger's and Associates and Crew Jane with Champlin Architecture. Should there be any questions on the report? Is it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you make the motion to untable this case?
No, but you should.
You should.
Before you start, yes, my apologies, this case was tabled last month, and so we need to officially untable it. Gentlemen, do you need a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to untable PUD 97-1, mod major 421.
Okay. And I have a second, and we'll just do that by voice, photo, in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are officially untabled. Thank you, Melissa.
Ready. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this application is for a one-story, 14,000-square-foot emergency department building. It's on a portion of about 17 acres. This property is located in north Beaver Creek, just north of Kemp Road on the east side between Lakeview and Kemp Road. Here's, you can see the 16.8 acres highlighted or surrounded in blue that's within this application. There's currently frontage on Lakeview, and this is an access drive that goes to the entire north-south portion of the 16.8 acre site. There's a current four-lane access point that goes out onto North Fairfield Road as well, and an existing access point on North Fairfield at Kemp Road. The property is zoned CPUD 97-1, which was rezoned back in 1997, and it does allow for the proposed uses that the applicant has brought forward this evening. To the east is, it's RPUD 97-2, but it's actually a mound, which is a screening mound for the single-family residential neighborhood to the east. To the south is a gas station and then a vacant property that has a few different zoning designations. And then to the west is the Walgreens in Keybank, and then the Goodwill and Sherman Williams Paints Center. One of the things with this application is they are proposing to do some reconfiguration of the existing parking lot that is on the north side of the site and just to the west of the building. So with this application, they'll be removing 42 parking spaces, and they'll also be reconfiguring the existing access point that lines up with the northern Chick-fil-A access point. So with this application, instead, right now, the access point's here, and they're going to move it to the north a little bit and turn it into a right-out, right-in access point only. And that'll help with some traffic challenges that are apparent with the popularity of the drive-through restaurant that's there to the northwest. They'll also, the main access point for this proposal and ultimately for the existing office building will line up with the four-lane access point that goes out to North Fairfield Road. But they are going to create a third access point and attach it to the existing access drive that's in the middle of the property. So they'll have a total of three access points with this proposed application. And with the construction of the new parking lot to the south and to the west of the standalone, or with the emergency room building that's attached to the existing building, they'll have 362 parking spaces overall, which is above what they need to run the two buildings Again, you can see what they're proposing here is this right-out and right-in only, so that it'll encourage people who do go to the existing building to use the new access point that's down to the south and help discourage, you know, if there is traffic back up based on the drive-through, then it will give them an additional access point to this building, both in and out. So again, you can see this is a little bit easier to see how the project relates to the existing restaurants that are out on site and how the future building relates to the existing building that's out there now. Also part of this application, but there are no plans for any construction right now, are the areas that I've highlighted in tan. So they will remain vacant until Planning Commission sees another site plan come forward. But there's no, nothing in the immediate future that's planned for those areas as well. So what they're proposing is a one-story, 14,650-square-foot building to the top of the parapet walls between 24 and 28 feet. And they do show some red metal canopies on each of the elevations that designate where ambulance drop-off and covered parking or covered entryway will be on the building. Now, the main entry to the building will be on the western elevation, and the ambulance drop-off area will be on the southern elevation of the building. A majority of the building is made out of a beige and brown brick, and they have a gray base to the building, and then use multicolor ephes around the all-four elevations of the building. So you can see they do have this, the cast stone base and the masonry brick and the ephes, and those do wrap around all four architectural elevations. This is just to get a better, kind of a perspective view on how the future building relates to the existing building on site and how it will look. This is just a generic block, so it would be obviously slightly different, but this is just to give you an idea of where or how it will look. In terms of landscaping, they do show a good amount of landscaping throughout the parking lot, and that'll help accent both the existing landscaping that's out on site and help screen this property from the residential, single-family development to the east. So on top of this 10- or 12-foot mound, they're all showing an extension of six-foot evergreen trees as well. But they are proposing to continue the ample landscaping that they have now to the new parking areas. In terms of signage, they have a generic sign on the south, I'm sorry, on the west elevation, on the southwest corner, and then they do have 18-square-foot ambulance and emergency room signage on each of the two red canopies. Also throughout the site, they do show ground signs that help wayfind through the site, and that's particularly important in an emergency room. You want to make sure that even in a quick timeframe, somebody knows where to go on site. So they do show a good amount of ground signage, but those are far off the public right-of-way. There's one out on the main access drive. But they are, you know, small enough in scale with a 16 or 17-acre site. So they do show also a brick base sign out on the entry point at Kemp Road and North Fairfield Road. Just a few of the conditions in your resolution. One, that any of the area that they do grading, but then there's no construction, they do have to cover that with appropriate ground cover so that we don't have a dirt area for a long period of time. Also, this, again, this being in the impact fee district, impact fees will be applied or applicable to this. Any gutters, downspouts, or roofs should not be visible on the outside of the building. And light fixtures that they're proposing to use need to match the existing light fixtures out on site. And one thing with this, we did forward it to the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee, and they asked that a bike rack be added somewhere out on site. Now, this doesn't have to be a big, huge bike rack, but you know, there are many creative ways to put a small bike rack out on site. And being centrally located in a major commercial corridor, it's important to give access to all users of the transportation network. There are 22 conditions in the resolution for your consideration. Again, we routed this out to various agencies, and staff, along with those agencies, do recommend approval of the applicant's request, subject to the conditions in the resolution. And I will be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Another comprehensive report. We will now open the public hearing portion, so if you would like to come forward and speak, don't be shy. Now is your time. Dang, I don't think this has happened before. Two public hearings in a row and no comments. You sure? Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask if we have any, no written input. Okay? I'm going to start with my vice chair.
All right. I've just got a couple of questions for staff. Stupid chairs.
Sure.
What's the, so there's two separate buildings, right? And they're going to be owned by two separate entities? Are they two parcels? Like, what's the arrangement there?
There's a subdivision case, but the intent is to combine it all into one lot and own by the same entity.
Okay, gotcha. Perfect. All right. Well, that leads me into my next question. What's the current parking requirement for the existing building today?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the existing building, but they do meet the minimum requirements when, we brought this forward a couple of years ago to Planning Commission for the office building. They were well above the amount. It's just, there is cross-parking with, throughout the site.
Okay.
So they meet it now, and they will go above and beyond it with their proposed...
Okay, because they were taking 45 out of the existing...
Yeah, and they're adding like 100, a couple hundred more. So they go from like 200 and some to 300.
45, yeah. Okay. All right. So I guess we're not really going to need a cross-parking agreement, because it's going to end up being one piece of land, one owner.
Right. And the covenants and restrictions, the covenants in this development in general have, you know, unified cross-parking.
Cross-parking, oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha. And then my only other question is, is there any worry, are these roads compatible for emergency traffic? I know that we're probably not going to be dealing with like heavy traumas and things like that, where if we're having to sit in an ambulance for an extra minute, it's probably not going to be life-threatening, but I mean, is there any concern that those roads are compatible with?
Are we talking about like?
Just having to negotiate through some of that slower-moving traffic, now you've got emergency traffic. Typically, you put, you put hospitals or emergency traffic in, you know, larger through fairs than you would in like a little side-back street, so, are, you know, are we comfortable with, with moving that kind of traffic through there with, especially with Chick-fil-A, my, my biggest concern is you've got just that one, that one entrance, and if an ambulance comes and makes a right there onto whatever the name of the road is right there, are they going to?
That's like.
Yeah, are they going to get?
They're going to.
Are they going to get stuck at the Chick-fil-A, because that backs up every single day?
Right.
So how do they get around that?
The, the main access is going to be here, because you can't, if you, even if you do turn down here, you would have to go all the way down here anyways. So the ambulance drivers are going to learn quick that, you know, they need to come to this access point or this access point, because this is just right in, so you'd have to be heading north anyways to get in at this point.
Okay.
You'll be able to get out there, but to get into here, you're, you're going to have to be heading north and turn in. So the only, the, the, the main access is going to be the, this boulevard area here. But that was the reason also for the third access point, this is a long access drive, and.
No, it's really smart site design. I mean, I really like it, I just, that's my only worry, I mean, I almost get hit about once a week trying to get through there, as everybody's kind of smiling through that single open lane back there.
Right now, it's a pinch point, because there's really, I mean, this is the only access point right now for this office building.
Yep.
Because this is the full access. But with the proposal, this turns into almost a tertiary access point, because it's right in and right out, so it'll focus all the traffic down to this point here, and some to here.
No, that's, that's really smart. Okay. No, I think that's, that makes, makes a lot of sense to me.
Just, just to address the question too, the office building, looking at it, looks like it required 129 off-street parking spaces.
Okay, so we're well, well above.
Yeah, the whole project's like 201, and what, how much do we have, Randy?
Above 300, I believe.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, so we're right at where we needed to. Okay. Cool. No further questions? That's, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I, I guess a quick question regarding, to piggyback off of Mr. Loftus's question. Given the known traffic issues outside of the drive-through, was there any consideration regarding putting the entrance point on Lakeview Drive to alleviate that turn, or was that not considered?
Well, Lakeview is set up as a, a, I would say a minor arterial, almost. It's a, it's a collector road, and so you really don't want to have traffic as much as possible stopping to go into a parking lot. That's why the point of the access drive that parallels the shopping center. You want, and this being a curb, and it, the parking lot is close to the road, and there's a sidewalk there, so we really didn't want to cut up that curb when they have the opportunity to utilize this extremely wide access point that's in place right now off of the main road. So you, you want to cut down on the number of curbs on the main roads as possible, which is why we didn't have, have any access there.
Okay, and when I read staff's report, I just had a, a quick question. I wasn't completely following the history on this parcel when it comes to the litigation and the settlement, and was there any concern regarding the use of this property in relation to that settlement agreement?
Sure. When this property was rezoned in 1997, what happened was, the, it got passed by city council, and the neighbors didn't agree with city council's decision to approve, so they brought it to a referendum, to a vote, and they won the vote, and so it overturned city council's decision, and the property owner at the time sued the city, and it was settled by a judge with certain conditions. And among those conditions were about the building size, building location, uses, and the like, and so that settlement was agreed between the neighbors, between the city, and between the owner at the time, to, to, to a list of conditions, and what they're proposing this evening meets those conditions of that settlement from 1997.
No other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. More, more of a comment than a question? Just the visibility of that four-lane road connector, you know, where I'm talking about?
Right here?
Yeah, that, it's just, it's kind of poor, in my opinion, the visibility there, if you're on the private drive going across. Don't know that we can do anything about that, because it's not on this property, but just, just wanted to make that.
Yeah, no, it's hard to see to get out of there.
Yeah, it's a, it's, there's a stop sign on both sides, so, I mean, the through traffic will have the right-of-way to go forward or go left or right, opposed to the, the traffic using the access road going north and south. Kind of like the mall does, where if you're going into the mall, you have the right-of-way to turn, rather than someone sitting on the mall ring road.
I have a couple. Is a repaving of that access road, which I believe, that's a private road, is it not?
It is private.
Okay. Is repaving of that in the, as part of this, because it's getting kind of raggedy?
I'll have our engineers look at it to make sure that it meets our standards, because there's construction standards of workmanship and the like.
Right. I'm, I'm particularly concerned if, ambulances these days are pretty heavy, they're built on truck chassis.
Sure.
And I just am, would feel a little better if that road was, was updated, or upgraded, or repaved, or whatever needs to be done to it.
Sure.
Okay. Looking at the, the access, particularly people coming in from the north, you've got the, the most direct access, you can't get there from here if you're coming from the north, because it's right in. And so people need to be educated to use that center entrance.
I think particularly the.
Hit it with your laser, the, the center one.
Are we talking here?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think that it'll be a quick learning period.
It would be really useful, particularly, well, actually for both directions, if the city would put an, one of the blue, not a hospital, but there's a blue sign that says emergency room, it would be useful to be, to put that out on North Fairfield Road.
Yeah.
Because you're not necessarily going to have people that are really knowledgeable about the area, and they're coming in in a panic, if they're not in an ambulance, they're coming in in a panic for an emergency situation. And I think it would make, make sense for the city to spend a couple hundred dollars and put a sign up there, since it's, it's off-site, so we can't really ask the applicant to do that.
I will look into, see what it takes to make that happen, and make it happen.
Okay. And I presume the design looks, from, from color, from colors and trim and so forth, is compatible with the existing building?
Yeah, it's not exactly the same, but that's okay.
It's close enough.
Yeah.
Okay. And one other question, and I don't know whether this would be something for you to answer, or something for the applicant, and that is the way the ambulances pull in to the emergency room, of the emergency, the ambulance entrance. Are they pulling in?
Right.
Almost like a U-turn? What I'm thinking of is trying to keep headlight splashes at night from pointing towards the existing housing.
Well, they are pulling it, they'll pull in and go to this covered area, so they will be facing.
Okay, so they're coming straight in, they're not looping around?
The general.
They're not looping around to the east and then coming back to the west?
Correct. I mean, they'll, they'll come off this access drive, and that's, they'll be dropping off on that side.
Okay, and the, the mounding there is sufficient to?
It's a big mound.
Yeah.
It's 15, 14, 15 feet.
Oh, I know it's a big mound. I'm, I'm just foot stomping it.
It's one of our mountains.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you. Gentlemen, second helpings.
I have, I'm sorry, one other question.
Sure.
Sorry, new guy.
That's all right.
That's okay.
When we, when we look at the, talking about some of the traffic flow, again, looking at the south-side entrance, you have what appears to be a couple different arteries, right? Where coming off of Kemp Road and going straight, you have a parking lot that kind of feeds out onto that, and then you have the private road. Is there sufficient lighting in that area, or is there a plan for sufficient lighting in that area to, to draw, I guess, attention to all the different ways that traffic may be entering and exiting off of that, that private road?
Their, their signage plan does have signs in the area. You can see they have signage here, they'll have sign here, so we'll make sure that there's enough parking lot lighting to ensure that, you know, that this isn't a danger in the evenings and, and at nighttime, but, you know, they'll, there's light out there now, and so, but we'll, we'll take a look at the foot candles and make sure that it's, it meets our minimum for safety reasons as well.
Okay, thank you.
So there will be a sign out there at Kemp that will say emergency room, or?
Well, it's, it's this, it, it's.
Well, that one says sign message here.
Right, and it'll, it'll most likely be whomever the tenant is of that building, but there's going to need to be a hospital, or the, the blue H.
Thank you.
At least at North Fairfield and Kemp, pointing both directions.
Thank you. Excellent. Gentlemen? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 97-1, MOD 421, freestanding emergency department, with the attached 22 conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
I have a second, and let's read the roll on this one.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Deiker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 4-0, and once again, we're looking forward to see what, what becomes with this. The population is aging, me included, so always happy to have more medical facilities here. We have a, a third public hearing, and this is updating our zoning code. We've got, staff has found some, some things that need to be updated as, as things change in the city, so. Where am I waving at?
Need to read this.
I know. I haven't finished yet.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask Melissa to read it, since the city is the applicant.
Sure.
Our, our, our very own Sandra is waiting to present it as soon as you read it.
This is case number PC 21-1, for the purpose of reviewing an update to the zoning code.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. As you all are aware, the Planning Development Department is constantly trying to keep our zoning code up to date with, you know, current, current trends, current issues. We keep track of, of things that come up as we go through our everyday operations, and we had one big section, a new section that's being added to our code that needs to be added fairly quickly on Live Sex Act businesses. We have a moratorium right now that is about to expire, so we wanted to go ahead and move this forward now, along with some of our other changes. So as far as that new section, 158.122, goes, I will let Steve McHugh handle that, but first I will go over our changes that we're proposing. I'm not going to go through all of the changes that are in your packet, I'm just going to touch on some of the bigger changes, and then briefly mention some of the smaller changes. So the, the first one that we wanted to address were the accessory dwellings, or granny pods. Right now, in our code, they're called granny flats. We have a definition for them, but then we don't ever address them in the code. Just with our aging population, you know, over the past few years, we have had a lot of interest from people asking, you know, if they can build a, a small structure for, you know, a relative, so that they're close by, so that they can take care of them, and right now, our code does not allow that. So what we are proposing to add into the code would be a max of 600 square feet per parcel, per, per granny flat, so you would only be permitted to have one on each lot. They would be permitted in A1, R1A, and R1AA. They are included in R2 in the packet, but that was a mistake, they need to be put into R, into A1 instead of the R2, and it would require conditional use approval. So we didn't want to fully just jump into this, you know, we want to ease into it and see what, kind of what, what issues might arise, and so by doing a conditional use approval requires that if someone wants to do this, they have to come before the board, so that we can really take a look at it, and if there are any kind of extenuating circumstances, you guys can, can take a look at those, and, and they can be addressed as well. We made the maximum height 16 feet, and then as far as the setbacks go, we wanted to make sure that they're set back a significant distance from any property lines, to take into account a noise, lighting, and of that kind of thing, so we, we made the requirement that the, the accessory dwelling be set back the same minimum setback requirements of that zoning district. So say within an R1A zoning district, the minimum rear yard setback is 50 feet, the minimum front yard setback is 40 feet. They would have to meet those setbacks, but still be behind the main structure, so it couldn't be next to the main structure. So obviously, in some cases, you know, it may not be possible, but in the cases where the lots are a little bit bigger, where it could accommodate something like this, then it would be possible. But as I stated, and I want to reiterate, it would require conditional use approval, so it's not something that someone can just come in and get a zoning permit for. The second issue we wanted to address was fencing around swimming pools and pool covers. I want to say, over 10 years ago, we made some changes to our, our zoning code when it came to automated pool covers. We didn't want to dive right in, again, we were hesitant about just allowing no fencing if you had an automated pool cover. I know there are a lot of cities that, that do allow that now. We still don't want to do that, but what we are proposing is that on a lot that is at least 10,000 square feet, if you have an automated pool cover that meets the specific requirements, then you would be permitted to have a fence that would be 42 inches. If you do not have an automated pool cover, you still have to meet the, the requirement of five-feet height for fences, and this is an attempt to encourage the use of automated pool covers. Obviously, they're much safer than just having a six-foot fence without a pool cover. Most of, most swimming pool accidents aren't from neighbors coming into the pool, it's usually from the, the actual, or someone in the household getting into the swimming pool. So we added a condition that when the pool is not in use, the, the pool cover must be in place as well. And then just a few additional changes that we are making. The lot widths in MX PUDs right now, it's at 80, 80 feet wide, and I believe that was just an oversight in, in PUDs, in residential PUDs, the minimum lot width is 60 feet, so we just wanted to make that consistent. Then we also have, we've had some concerns about the number of trailers that people have on their residential properties, so we made the maximum number of trailers is two outside of a building, so you can have them inside a building if necessary, but two can be outside. And then one of the, the bigger issues that, that you guys have, have been seeing, and what we've been seeing because of what's happened in the past years, the, the issue that we've had with vehicle stacking and drive-throughs. We didn't want to go in and just automatically increase the number of vehicle stacking spaces that are required, so what we did is we added a section that states that if, if a drive-through has a potential to stack out onto an arterial or an intersection, Planning Commission and City Council have the authority to require additional stacking spaces in the future. So for restaurants, hopefully that, that will clear up some issues. Hopefully, with things opening up, that's going to clear up some issues too, but just to be able to accommodate the, the additional drive-through traffic that we've been seeing. And then also, non-conforming structures, we have a section on when a, a non-conforming structure is, is damaged, and it basically says that if a structure is damaged by more than 60%, then if the structure's rebuilt, it has to be brought into compliance with our current code. Policy-wise, we have actually never done that. In the case of the tornadoes, we allowed people to put their structures back where they were. When there's a fire, if they're reusing the same foundation, we allow them to build their house back on the same foundation, if the foundation is safe. So we, we adjusted that section of the code to allow for that, that if, if it's some sort of disaster that wasn't willfully caused by the property owner, they can, they can rebuild as it was before. And then we just added a couple of things into our two appendices. Appendix A, we added the minimum footprint requirement in an agricultural district, we didn't have one before, and it's, it's going to be 1,200 square feet, which is consistent with what we have in R1A and R1AA. And then we just had a couple of, of little minor changes in the schedule of permitted uses, where we had some inconsistencies. Some things were named, different things, and then. Some things were named, different things, and then allowed in one place and not in the other, so we consolidated everything and made sure that, that everything was taken care of. So obviously, we are recommending approval of our proposed changes. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. It is a public hearing, so do we have folks here who wish to speak or ask questions? Please? Anybody?
Actually, one more thing.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry. If, Steve, if you want to go over that, that section. Yeah, forgot about that. So an additional section, 158.122.
Yes, yes. You have... Oh, sorry.
Within the definitions here, we attempted to really sort of define and distinguish that certain businesses, and the reason for this, are protected constitutionally, right? Which are allowed to exist. What we're talking about is a biz, type of business that is not, does not have the same constitutional protections as the courts have found. And so therefore, we are specifically excluding, and then I think later in the agenda here, you have the actual full code section, I'll have page number, but what a live sex act business is. And the, I think there's a case out of Phoenix, Arizona, that has, you know, talks in terms of that transmission of disease, public morals, that there is not a, these are not protected businesses. And so the city, when presented with possibility, took the position that we should have a moratorium and get this to planning as soon as we could, and then also to council. So, I mean, this is, we are not going after businesses that would otherwise be legal, but this is a specific niche, and we feel that there are good, valid reasons that, again, the transmission of disease, public morals, and all the things that go with it, that this business, type of business, should be prohibited in the city of Beaver Creek. So that's what this is about.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll have the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak about our changes to our proposed zoning code changes? I'm not seeing much action. Gee, three in a row. So we, did we have any written input on this?
No.
Okay, then I will officially close the public hearing. And since I promised Neil I wouldn't start with him first, I'll go back to Jonathan.
No questions.
Okay.
Oh, I just have one question for staff slash advocate. Maybe, I guess, more of a comment or maybe a suggestion. So on the granny pod specifically, would it be possible to add some additional language that it must meet all residential code requirements as far as, because I'll tell you what, I can build a big shed now with what I can do. And just put a sink and a bathroom in it, and I've got a granny pod that I can...
So all, all building, building requirements, health, building...
Yeah, to meet residential codes, at least. If they're going to fake it, they're going to have to spend a lot of money to do it, and probably not worth their while at that point, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, then I can build a 600-square-foot shed. Yeah. But, no, that's, that's the only...
It's called a garage.
Yes, that's, yes. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Neil?
I have two questions.
Sure.
So the first one is, I think you said this, but I wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. When talking about the additional stacking requirements, that wouldn't be, would this section be, be able to be used as a, as a means to retroactively apply to any current or known problems?
No, unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Yes, this is for future developments.
Understood, okay. And then my second question may actually be more for the city attorney. So in the resolution about the live sex acts, it talks about the Planning Commission relying on findings from these cases. Have that been documented to ensure that we met all of kind of the requirements and the nature of what that ruling, or those rulings were?
Certainly, I'll be glad to provide them, but yes, I read them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And no, no questions about opening ourselves up for any challenges, that we didn't meet those, or...
I can't say that, I always, as I always say, is that, you know, I can't promise that anyone with the appropriate amount of money can file a lawsuit, right?
Judgment proof rather than litigation proof.
Exactly, exactly. But I do think that we've made every good faith effort to research the issue, study the issue. I've talked to the director and Sandra about this, in order to, you know, try to address this in a professional manner. And again, just looking at cases, and there, there have been cases in Ohio too, that have addressed this also. It, it hasn't become a large issue, but I understand other jurisdictions in Ohio have taken similar steps.
Okay. That's it.
I have a couple of questions. Somehow you knew that.
Sure.
And this deals with the, with the accessory dwelling units. I'll have to admit, I prefer the term casita rather than granny pod. Granny pod sounds like someplace you stick your grandmother. But that's neither here nor there. Just a, a couple of points. One is you, you're really restricting to an extremely small percentage of the typical lots in Beaver Creek by having the, that 40-foot backyard setback. Because there are very few properties that will allow you to build a second building without it impinging on the one that's already there. Also, it prevents people with existing, say, a detached garage. Not that I'm planning to do it with mine, but I have a detached garage that was built with the proper accessory building setback of 10 feet from both lot lines.
Correct.
I could have gone five feet, because the two lots that it adjoins are both vacant, or were vacant when the, when the building was built. It's just something to, to consider, because it's conditional anyway. And that might be something that could be conditional based on the existing buildings nearby, based on the, the lot shape and size and so forth.
I understand.
I don't expect us to be overwhelmed with requests for casitas, but if we're going to do it, we might as well make it so that it's, it's possible. Shoot, I had another thing about, about those two. It'll come to me, I hope. Gentlemen, anything additional? Any other, any other comments about any of the other things in the zoning code that we're looking at? I think it's a great idea about the, the disaster thing, that people are traumatized enough if they lose their house, without having to go through all the rigmarole of, of making it meet current standards, particularly if it's a, if it's an older building where the setbacks have changed and so forth. That can be, that can be a serious problem if you can't use your old foundation. Okay. Second helpings, gentlemen? Thank you, Sandra. Then I want, I want a motion here, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 21-1 zoning code updates.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, second.
I have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and read the roll.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, thank you. Gentlemen? And thank you for your usual comprehensive keeping our zoning code up to date.
Oh, there are two...
We now also need one, we have 21-1B.
Yeah, there were two resolutions. So one was for the entire zoning code, and the other one was for just the live sex act.
That's a live sex.
Completely missed that.
So we need a motion on that one too. Thank you.
So I need a second motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 21-1B prohibition of live sex acts.
All right.
Mr. Chair, second.
I have a motion in a second, and we'll go ahead and read the roll on that, just to make it official.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries for zero. So we are at our very last case, which is a replat. Fire away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of a replat of Lot 1C of the Fairfield Place subdivision for approximately 13.163 acres. So this replat is in reference to the project for the emergency department that you did just see. So the applicant is proposing to split the, the remaining property into three separate parcels. So Lot 1G is the 3.915 acres, and that is where the emergency department will be located. Lot 1E will remain vacant. Then you have Lot 1F, which will be the access road, and that remaining lot, which will be maintained by the existing property owner. And in the future, the, the plan is to combine all of these lots together, but at this time, they just want to separate them out for bookkeeping purposes. So we did route this out to all the area agencies. They all recommended approval, or approval with conditions, and staff is also recommending approval. And if you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Thank you. I'm just going to kind of throw this open. Anyone have questions? Gentlemen, I do have, I do have two. Isn't it kind of unusual to have an outlot and a, at least a semi-public road? I realize it's a private street. Isn't that kind of unusual to have that on the same parcel?
Uh...
Would it mean that whoever buys, for example, Parcel 1F to develop as an outlot, would be responsible for maintaining the road?
I, I mean, generally it would, but I do believe that in there, that they, all of the property owners have an agreement to share maintenance of the road. But it is, it is rare.
Okay.
I can't think of another place that we have that same.
Neither could I.
Yeah.
Okay. And the second one is, it appears from what we saw a few minutes ago, that part of the, of that driveway into the, the proposed emergency room is actually in Lot 1E.
It actually, it shifts this way.
Oh, it does curve around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right? Yeah, it does.
It just looked a little odd, that little bite out of there.
Yeah, it does kind of that weird little jog there. Yeah, no, it'll, it'll all be on Lot 1G.
Okay, so it will, it will still be in the same lot, because that wouldn't make any sense at all.
Yeah, it'll all be in the same lot. And then in the future, they're going to combine everything together, so it's all going to be one, anyway.
Okay. Good, answered my questions. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Did that engender anything in y'all's brains? Okay, we're good to go? I need a motion then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 20-1, or 21-5, with the attached three conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
And I have a second, thank you very much. And we will call the roll.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries for zero. And it looks like we are fresh out of agenda items. Anything else for the good of the order, gentlemen? Staff, we good to go?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
And we are at 7:04.